Good evening. It is 6:30. Thank you all for coming. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, could you call the roll?
Yes. Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Present.
Mayor Protem Racini?
Here.
Mayor Zimmerman?
Present. Thank you. So to everybody who doesn't know, I'm just going to take two seconds and give a shout out to City Manager Steve Franks. Does an amazing job. Staff prepares a set of mayoral notes for me to follow. And I was a little anxious when I didn't have them earlier, and I was starting to do my own prep. And then I got them, and I was so relieved. So I just wanted to give an extra thank you and say I very much appreciate all that you guys do.[58.48][58.48](APPLAUSE). We'll start with Pledge of Allegiance. Crystal Miles, if you would, please.
If you'd stand if you can and place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So next up, I will do an invocation. So I could start every council meeting with a saying from Kristy Covington, our Villa Parked distinguished citizen. She has several Covingtonisms that our kindergarten kids have heard over and over and learned to incorporate into their lives. Small sayings that reminded them about what's important, learning to brush it off or paddle your own canoe, and differentiate between penny problems and dollar problems. They're things that we should all keep in mind. But my favorite one is be a good and kind friend. Friendship is a fundamental and quintessentially important part of life. If you can be a good friend, it speaks volumes of your character. And if you can be a kind friend, you will keep those friendships forever. So for this meeting and for this month, let us all strive to be good and kind friends. Amen. So I'm going to move right into our presentations. First up is our Villa Park Distinguished Citizen. That is Kristy Covington. If you would please stand (APPLAUSE) and then come to the podium. You get to stand there as I get to talk about you just for a minute or two. So our Villa Park Distinguished Citizen is someone who I thought of instantly when I picture who we should celebrate and recognize in our city. We call Villa Park the hidden jewel. Kristy Covington is one of those rare gems you find in humanity, someone who is positive and uplifting and inspires people around her to be their best selves. I know Kristy Covington as Mrs. Covington, not just as an amazing kindergarten teacher, but the kindergarten teacher that we all hope our kids get to experience because they give our children more than just the curriculum. They pour their hearts into their job, and our kids are taught lifelong skills that help them to be amazing people. I usually give a little background, and I knew very little of this before, so I'm happy to have gotten the chance to know the history that brought Mrs. Covington into us. Kristy got her Bachelor of Arts from Cal State Long Beach where she met her husband Colin, and she got her Master's in Education with a psychology emphasis from U.S. International University. She was an assistant professor at Cal State Long Beach in the Education Department and the master teacher for student teachers from Cal State Long Beach, UCLA, USC, Colorado State University, and Cal State Los Angeles. Kristy also worked as a mentor in Watts. It's a fun story to get to hear from you, where her skills were put to the test in reaching out to and getting through to young kids, where a good day involved inspiring the children to work together and really enjoy their work. After Kristy and Colin got married in 1986, they moved from Balboa to Villa Park in 1988. Kristy was an elementary school teacher at Stone Creek Elementary in Irvine until in 1992, a neighbor, a PTA president, I was looking to see if she was here, she's not, Kathy Moffett, called her up to get her to transfer to Serrano Elementary and teach kindergarten. For more than two decades, Mrs. Covington strove to make the kindergarten kids at Serrano feel special and valuable. She saw potential and greatness in children where sometimes they didn't recognize it themselves, and let them know that if they worked hard, they could achieve great things. She made a difference in the lives of every child, and I know from personal experience because both my kids were lucky enough to have had her as their teacher. She was like a beacon of light, and not just to the kids, but to the parents too. Those Covingtonisms, we get something from those, and I'm going to dive just for a second. Differentiating a penny problem and a dollar problem literally has saved my marriage.[338.81][338.81](LAUGHTER). Being, you know, some people say pick your battles, but sometimes knowing which battles to pick is important, and those are simple lessons that, you know, we need to take with us. The kids loved her. They would flock to her house on Halloween, often creating a huge line outside her door to get a chance to see her. The Covingtons live not far from here. I guess you could say that about all the homes in Villa Park.[362.12][362.12](LAUGHTER). She told me that theirs is one of the original oldies but goodies in Villa Park, and they have spent many years renovating this family home. They have two sons, Chase and Connor, and two adorable grandsons, Jackson and Lincoln. Chase and his family live in Old Town Orange. Connor lives in Newport Beach. Chase's wife, Aura, is also a teacher. She's continuing the teaching tradition at Serrano where she teaches sixth grade. There are a lot of accolades that Kristy has won. I'm trying to distill what the essence of who she is down a little bit, and it's hard to do. I don't know if we all know someone like Kristy Covington. She's unique and amazing, but if you know somebody who's had such a huge impact on hundreds of lives, making the better, granting their wisdom, and in learning how spectacular life can be, I think it's sometimes rare that we get to stop and take a moment to acknowledge Rare that we get to let them know we appreciate everything that they've done to make our lives and the lives of everyone around them better. So with all of my heart, thank you, Mrs. Covington, for being who you are and bringing your joy to Villa Park.[442.91][442.91](APPLAUSE).
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.[446.91][446.91](APPLAUSE).
Yeah, right. But. Yes. Okay. Okay. Got the.
Everybody.
Everybody?
Everybody.
Everybody? All right.
Everybody.
Her fan club.
She's got a lot of red.
She better stay on the drive.
White angling.
You know, do you want me to put the?
Oh, that's too big.
No, I just do a lot of these.[466.91][466.91](LAUGHTER). That's a great picture. Oh, it's terrific.
I got it. Everybody.
Better. I thought it was better to have it all.
Yeah, no, it is.
Okay.
So proud of you, Kristy.
Oh, my God.
So sweet.
I need a last one.
You know that. You know that. Yes. Yes, it is.
Just proud.
Is the light on?
Well, it's on.
This is it? Oh. Well, it looked like it was on. What can I tell you? Anyway, on behalf of Orange County Supervisor Don Wagner, we are so thrilled. It's just wonderful when you hear those stories about you and how great you've been with the children here in our town of Villa Park. And we want to say thank you for all the effort, for all the dedication it has taken to get Chad's kids through.[512.72][512.72](LAUGHTER). No, to help all of our children. And it's just so important, and Supervisor Wagner wished he could be here tonight, but he had another engagement. So you got me instead, and I want to just say thank you because I'm very impressed and I thank you so much again on behalf of Orange County Supervisor. Thank you.[534.91][534.91](APPLAUSE). You're welcome. We can both hug each other for so little. We need all.
My size. Wait, should I do this?
Sure. Look at it. There we go. Too perfect height.
Thank you. Thank you very much, City Council. I appreciate this from the bottom of my heart. Thank you so much.[548.91][548.91](APPLAUSE).
You're all invited to the reception right next door if you can get out of here in a timely manner.
That's good incentive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, no kidding.
So it was pointed out that I skipped over a spot, so I'm going to go back just a second and say the City of Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the City Clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found in the back of the room on the counter. Speakers will be called in individually during the public comments section of the item they wish to speak on. Speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. Speakers were also able to spend comments in writing by 3:00 PM. Those comments will be read aloud during the public comments section of each item. So now we move on to our other presentations, starting with the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Sir?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members. Thank you for having me here. This is our September report. Before I get started on the calls for service, I just wanted to go over, I've been going over some of the sheriff's message points, and one of the things I wanted to cover this month is online gaming and some kind of safety issues we're seeing with that. So online gaming, obviously, it's a popular pastime for many of our children, teenagers. Interactive games, it appeals to them. It's important to educate your children the dangers of this feature and equip them with the knowledge they need so they can identify concerning behavior. And here are some things you can do to educate and protect your kids from what's called game grooming. Game grooming is what predators will look to to contact children and teens through gaming apps and may identify vulnerable youth and attempt to groom them. Predators sometimes pose as other young players, partner with victims during gameplay to forge a bond, and work to build trust through chat features. Eventually, a predator may try to encourage their victim to meet in person. How can we make it so our children can stay safe? For young children, consider disabling the online play feature on their app. In many games, players compete in the offline version of the game, which prevents other users from messaging them. If your child plays the online version, talk to them about the dangers of interacting with strangers online. We probably all remember when we were kids, we had stranger danger, right? We need to have that kind of same concept when online. If you don't know who the person is, our children shouldn't be engaging them in these online conversations. Remind them to never offer any personal or private information, and don't ever agree to meet with anyone in person. Encourage your child to come to you if they observe any concerning chat behaviors, and continue to monitor their gameplay. I would also say, you know, be engaged as a parent, you know, watch them play, participate, play on the games with them. You know, that's good for us as the parents to be involved. I know my sons particularly would hate it because I was always getting them killed in the games. Dad, you're getting me killed. So it was usually about a 10-minute window, and then I would disappear. So, but that's the message point, game grooming. We want to make sure, paying attention to that with our children if they're playing The calls for service for September of 2022, we had 298 calls for service. And some of the incidents that we encountered, we had one grand theft from an unlocked vehicle, $2,900 loss. It was a couple sets of very nice golf clubs. And then you'll see that we had two other vehicle thefts below, also unlocked vehicles. Again, we want to remind folks, please do not leave valuables in your vehicle, especially if they're visible, and lock your vehicle. We did have a couple other vehicle burglaries below there you'll see. Again, a couple high-dollar losses, $1,500 on one and $500. So again, we want to make sure we're securing our property, not leaving in their vehicles. We had a commercial burglary right here at the Ralphs, actually, on Santiago, and three subjects came in, stole cosmetics from the store, and fled. This is kind of similar to these crews you're seeing going around, except they don't do like the smash and grab. They just go in and use it like a distraction or just take products and walk out. It was about a $1,500 loss. Fortunately for us on that, we did locate and apprehend all these suspects. Our directed enforcement team was able to identify the suspects early on and started doing some surveillance on them, actually observed them in the act of doing a similar crime in Placentia. Long and short of it, got in pursuit, they crashed, we caught them, they went to jail. So we recovered a lot of stolen merchandise, not only from this location, but from other burglaries that they had committed. We had a vandalism, vehicle egging. We did have two misdemeanor assaults. One was at the high school. Students got in a fistfight. And then we had another assault in the shopping center here. We did have one assault with a deadly weapon incident, which was, the victim was hit in the face with a glass bottle. This was during a family dispute. Couple narcotics violation arrests. The deputies contacted individuals in possession of controlled substances. And in our traffic-related incidents, we responded to four traffic collisions, one hit-and-run, two non-injury, and one very minor traffic accident. In regards to traffic citations, we issued a total of 13 parking citations. The patrol deputies issued 22 traffic citations, and the motor officer issued 18 traffic citations. So we've been pretty busy, and I think, you know, we're fortunate, we're able to identify the folks from here and get them into custody here in a pretty short time. So it was a good little bit of a success.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
None.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up will be Orange County Fire Authority.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Scott Weedon-Soler. I introduce myself. I'm your new division chief for the City of Villa Park, just recently promoted in the last week. Chief Hunter has moved on and moved to another division in South County. So I'll be here with you, and I look forward to working with all of you. So thank you for the opportunity. In the last month, as far as the report goes, in the last month since the last meeting on September 25th, there were 117 units that were dispatched to 41 incidents within the City of Villa Park. Those incidents ranged, for the majority, they were medical aids, cardiac stroke, difficulty breathing, nine of which were falls or traumatic injuries. And then there were 10 miscellaneous fires between vegetation, more than likely ornamental vegetation. We didn't have any large fires over the last month. The message for this month from OCFA is not to, certainly we don't let our guards down. I know we just had the rain, a pretty significant rainstorm, but we haven't been given the clear on fire season yet. So as we all know, our fire season extends from midsummer through the fall. We had a light Santa Ana condition yesterday. Fortunately, no incidents. We've got another one coming Thursday that we're monitoring closely, and if it hits certain parameters, we'll be upstaffing additional resources, prepositioning for that wind event. But our message for the month would be just preparation for all of us, and specifically for our homes. Best thing we could do is have a plan for when the fire hits so that we're not scrambling when the fire starts. This would include vegetation management around the homes, home hardening where you can. We want to look at the landscape within 100 feet and create a defensible space around our homes, install or retrofit our homes with fire-resistant construction materials where we can to reduce the threat from embers, flames, and radiant heat. And then, as I mentioned before, probably most importantly is to create a plan now. Have a go-bag, have a plan for what you want to take with you for when our partners from the sheriffs come and are assisting with evacuations during the incidents. So you can find more information by visiting ocfa.org, and I'm ready for any questions if you have any.
Chief, thank you so much. Welcome again, and appreciate, congratulations first of all.
Thank you.
And I hope you give Chief Hunter our best. Could you, I apologize, could you pronounce your last name for me?
Yes, it's Weedon-Soler.
Weedon-Soler, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Any questions?
No, just I did of the mayor. Welcome and congratulations, and please let Chief Hunter know we wish him the best.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to council member meeting attendance reports, and we will jump right into Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control.
That's me. Okay, so we met on Thursday, October 20th, and when I first started on vector three years ago, one of the big part of vector control is their tiptoss, take action, and that they want to try and make sure that residents all over Orange County are recognizing breeding sources and how they can help, residents can help mitigate some of these problems, even though they're such a huge issue. And I've already talked about sterile insect technique that they're, you know, we're starting on pretty soon. But what can residents do? So Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control was always on a campaign and would ask the cities for help, and that help could consist of posting information on social media, PSA's, magazine, or newsletters, any sort of media, e-newsletters, billboards, and then truck signage. So we have those truck magnets. So, and each year, it would start over, and the cities, whoever participated, got an award for kind of being the most proactive in trying to help convey the message of tiptoss, take action, and prevent the mosquito problems. And when we started three years ago, not all 34 cities were on board, and a lot of times, some of the cities were left off because they just weren't participating. Well, this year, finally, there's support from all 34 cities, and I am so proud to say, both Kim Chodry, who's not here, and myself, being the trustee, we've really ramped up this tiptoss, take action, and recognize the importance of getting the community involvement. And so we, the City of Villa Park, won our first award, and it says, "An appreciation for your outstanding contribution and level of commitment to improving awareness about vectors and the diseases that they carry." And I believe some of the district staff will be here next month to present that. Hopefully, Kim can come. I know it's probably not her favorite to come at night, but I think it's really important. So I just wanted to share that with everyone, that City Villa Park is doing an outstanding job and making sure that we recognize the importance of getting rid of these mosquitoes and the residents tiptoss, take action. And I was with two weeks in a row, several, I think, seven different residents on three, and additionally, three different streets identifying different breeding sources with our inspector, and just amazing. So we're getting it, and at least the City Villa Park is actively pursuing the mosquitoes. So going on with that, some of the data that we have, of course, I always comment on the West Nile virus. So in the whole state of California, there are 93 human infections, which has gone up, and we have six human cases in the county of Orange, one West Nile positive dead bird. And then, of course, what we're noticing is that we are, the normal level for the mosquitoes has increased, almost doubled, from what it was two years ago. And dog heartworm in 2022, there are 17 cases of dog heartworm, which is transmitted by mosquitoes, whereas in 2020, there was three, and in 2021, there was nine. So it's really important to make sure that you do that tiptoss, take action, not just because of mosquitoes for you, but your animals, because they're carrying that dog heartworm. And then flea-borne typhus, those are the fleas, not the mosquitoes. There are now 22 cases. And if you remember, I had reported, at first, there was one or two, then there was seven, then there was 11, and now there's 22. Most of them are in South County. But again, just make sure you treat your pets for fleas. That's it.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot. I had somebody ask, the reservoir?
Yes.
And then Santiago Creek?
Yes.
Is there anything that we do?
Well, yes, that is actively monitored by a separate, not the inspector that comes for the specific city, but there is an actual crew that does the, kind of the unincorporated areas. And so, yes, they have truck mounted, and they have backpacks with the water-resistant, you know, boots and stuff, and they go in there, and they base it off of the traps. And so whenever the threshold is met, then they automatically treat it. And if you remember, last month, they had done a treatment kind of in the perimeter of Wanda and Collins and Lincoln, and so that was a very effective treatment as well. But you can always put me on the spot.
I can pass that back. Thank you.
Yes. And again, sorry, as I mentioned last time, if anyone wants an inspection, please reach out to me, and I organize it, and it's great. Residents are always surprised because we had one that was sure she had no mosquitoes, and our inspector found three different sites on her property, so.
Wow. Yeah, I do hear a lot of people talking about how they're just getting eaten alive, and it's been bad, so. Thank you, Crystal.
Yep.
So next up is Orange County Sanitation District. We did a focus on our CIP annual report, the Capital Improvement Project, was discussed at great length. We talked about this 10-year, $3 billion program, and just kind of went into it a little bit, focusing on what it's doing. So it enhances the regional sewer system for 2.6 billion people in central and northwest Orange County. The efforts of the program are summarized in an annual report. In the fiscal year 2021, 2022, the program included over 90 active projects with a budget of $195 million to replace and repair the facilities. The report highlights the various projects that are ongoing and planned for the near future, as well as a financial summary for OC SAN to continue providing reliable service. If anybody's interested in that annual report, I have a link that I can hand out, or we can put in the feeder maybe, just so that if anybody is interested, they can go check that out. Moving on, I went to the wrong one. Next up is Orange County Fire Authority.
Thank you. We will be meeting this Thursday, and so I have no reportable notes at this time.
Okay. Orange County Library Advisory Board?
Our meeting's on Thursday as well.
Excellent. No meeting from Orange County Unified School District, City Schools meeting, but there is one that's scheduled, so I'll let you know when that comes up. Law Enforcement Advisory?
We met on October 10th, and items of note that I think are significant that we should address, or at least have a discussion point about, were some residents' concerns about an increase in crime that we've seen throughout California. And though we are arguably one of the safest cities in Orange County, if not one of the safest cities in California, we're not immune. One resident told a story of how he encountered somebody committing a crime on his property, followed the individual down the street, and then a physical altercation occurred. He was concerned about a possible delayed response. The deputies that were responding did do it by.
And dog heartworm in 2022, there are 17 cases of dog heartworm, which is transmitted by mosquitoes, whereas in 2020, there was three, and in 2021, there was nine. So it's really important to make sure that you do that tiptoss, take action, not just because of mosquitoes for you, but your animals, because they're carrying that dog heartworm. And then flea-borne typhus, those are the fleas, not the mosquitoes. There are now 22 cases. And if you remember, I had reported at first, there was one or two, then there was seven, then there was 11, and now there's 22. Most of them are in South County. But again, just make sure you treat your pets for fleas.
Okay. Yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot. I had somebody ask, the reservoir? And then Santiago Creek? Is there anything that we do?
Well, yes, that is actively monitored by a separate, not the inspector that comes for the specific city, but there is an actual crew that does the, kind of the unincorporated areas. And so, yes, they have truck mounted, and they have backpacks with the water-resistant, you know, boots and stuff, and they go in there, and they base it off of the traps. And so whenever the threshold is met, then they automatically treat it. And if you remember, last month, they had done a treatment kind of in the perimeter of Wanda and Collins and Lincoln. And so that was a very effective treatment as well. But you can always put me on the spot.
I can pass that back. Thank you.
And again, sorry, as I mentioned last time, if anyone wants an inspection, please reach out to me, and I organize it, and it's great. Residents are always surprised because we had one that was sure she had no mosquitoes, and our inspector found three different sites on her property, so.
Yeah, I do hear a lot of people talking about how they're just getting eaten alive, and it's been bad, so. Thank you, Crystal. So next up is Orange County Sanitation District. We did a focus on our CIP annual report. The capital improvement project was discussed at great length. We talked about this 10-year, $3 billion program, and just kind of went into it a little bit, focusing on what it's doing. So it enhances the regional sewer system for 2.6 billion people in central and northwest Orange County. The efforts of the program are summarized in an annual report. In the fiscal year 2021, 2022, the program included over 90 active projects with a budget of $195 million to replace and repair the facilities. The report highlights the various projects that are ongoing and planned for the near future, as well as a financial summary for OC SAN to continue providing reliable service. If anybody's interested in that annual report, I have a link that I can hand out, or we can put in the feeder maybe, just so that if anybody is interested, they can go check that out. Moving on, I went to the wrong one. Next up is Orange County Fire Authority.
Thank you. We will be meeting this Thursday, and so I have no reportable notes at this time.
Okay. Orange County Library Advisory Board?
Our meeting's on Thursday as well.
Excellent. No meeting from Orange County Unified School District, City Schools meeting, but there is one that's scheduled, so I'll let you know when that comes up. Law Enforcement Advisory?
We met on October 10th, and items of note that I think are significant that we should address, or at least have a discussion point about, were some residents' concerns about an increase in crime that we've seen throughout California. And though we are arguably one of the safest cities in Orange County, if not one of the safest cities in California, we're not immune. One resident told a story of how he encountered somebody committing a crime on his property, followed the individual down the street, and then a physical altercation occurred. He was concerned about a possible delayed response. The deputies that were responding did do, by all accounts, a very good job in getting there. Unfortunately, they were also involved in a use of force on the way there. So I know that Captain is looking into his concerns, but I think he left with more information and was, in my opinion, a little less concerned than when he first got there. There's really no other significant information that was developed, no new business that was discussed, just some bantering back and forth about some old agenda items and approval of the minutes. So, thank you.
Thanks, sir. So next up, Villa Park Community Services Foundation?
Okay, thank you. So we met on September 28th. We always meet the Wednesday after the city council meeting, so I'm reporting on last month's, and then we're going to meet tomorrow. But first, the foundation has changed their logo, so if we could put that. So now it's, it actually does not do it justice in this when you see it on printed material or else on the magnets, and it's actually fantastic. And Mark Kuli is the one that designed that and came up with that, and it's actually very attractive. And then, the foundation has annually a Volunteer of the Year Award and a, I guess like a cocktail party hour to recognize that individual. And so this was just hosted at Lori and Carl Kreitzinger's house on Sunday. And the Volunteer of the Year went to Forrest Case, which, there he is, with his award, with Ed, our chair for the foundation. Oh, see, and there you can see the new logo. It looks really pretty, especially since it matches the colors for the city. So, I thought that was a really good choice. So Forrest is the one, he's been with the foundation about three years, and he's in charge of organizing most of the events, from your Santa tour to the boat parade. He assists with the volunteers for the Halloween Fest, and really instrumental in helping make sure that a lot of the community events that the city has. So, congratulations to him.
And he's, can I just interject? He's great because he participates like so much in all of those. Like for the Fourth of July Parade, I think I got a picture with, because his outfit is spectacular, and he gets out there, he's just really enthusiastic. And that's, congratulations, Forrest.
Like a big onesie or whatever. He's great, he's fantastic, perfect guy for the job. Couldn't think of anyone better. And then, of course, the decorations, Diwali, that celebrates the light over the dark, and that was put on by the foundation, recognizing a lot of the different multicultural events. Some dates, December 3rd is the Santa tour, December 11th is the boat parade. Of course, October 5th was a candidate forum that was hosted by the Community Services Foundation, and our own Pat Betris moderated that and did a fantastic job. So got a lot of compliments from that. The residents were really happy the foundation put that on. Halloween Fest is this Sunday, which is really fantastic, one of my favorite times. Saturday, did I say Sunday? Sorry, Saturday, my apologies. This Saturday, 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 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. There's a costume contest. Make sure you get here early to sign up. I think some people weren't aware that you had to sign up like right at 4 o'clock, between 4:00 and, I want to say like 4:45, maybe 5:00 o'clock, to get your dogs and your children signed up for that costume contest. And then it's fantastic. I do not know who the judges are this year, but they're usually great. And it's a great time, attended by many of our neighboring communities, so it's a fantastic community event. And then, sign up for the Marine Thanksgiving. So I think the deadline for that, I want to say is the 30th, but just to be on the safe side, I would recommend that you go. And if you want to host a Marine, it's very important. A lot of these boys are brand-new, you know, out of high school, joining the Marines. They're not allowed to go home. Some of them are far away. We've hosted them. We had some boys from Nebraska and Arkansas, and they don't, they're not allowed, you know, to go back for Thanksgiving. So you take them in for a day, and they are so thankful and grateful, and it's a fantastic event. I believe they still have Marines that need a place to go. So, all the information is on the website, on the foundation website. And I want to say it's by the 30th you need to sign up, but just in case, I would try and sign up by Friday. And Robert Fraxton is the one that's in charge of that. So if you have any questions, you can reach out to him or anybody in the foundation.
Technically, it's his daughter Sammy who's running that.
Thank you.
Doing a fantastic, or Samantha, Sammy. And they did say they had something like 50 Marines signed up so far. But in past years, they've got as many as 90 from Villa Park, and we've like blown away the, it's the YMCA Camp Pendleton group that does that because we really get a lot of people in the city to participate. So, if you haven't done it before, we've also done it for several years.
It's so awesome.
It's a great way to spend your Thanksgiving, to invite a couple Marines in. They've just gone through boot camp. They come, and they're fantastic, so.
And it was paused because of COVID, and we're finally able to get back there. So really consider, if you can, and take two at a time, please, because it just makes it so much more comfortable for the Marines, so.
Yep. Thank you. Next up is Housing Legislative Committee?
No meeting, but I would like to use this opportunity to address a couple of rumors I've heard recently around town about our affordable housing mandate. And I'd like to ask a couple of questions of our city attorney to help address these. One of the common rumors that's going around is that Villa Park really doesn't have to prepare and implement a housing element. Is that true? And what happens if we don't implement, adopt, and implement a housing element update?
Villa Park, like every city in the state of California, has to adopt a housing element. Depending upon when we submitted and when it's certified, the deadlines shift. But if you do not have a certified housing element, you're susceptible to a panoply of different state enforcement actions, civil actions, whether it be on one side, affordable housing groups on the other side, by realtor groups, and you can be in a world of pain.
Okay. Okay, the other rumor I hear is that we could meet our regional housing needs assessment, the Reno allocation, solely with accessory dwelling units. Are you aware if, is there anybody that's tried that?
Yeah, we have submitted our first initial draft in December of 2020. We submitted a draft, and it was rejected by Housing and Community Development.
And that was where we proposed?
It was 100% based on our ADUs, our accessory dwelling units. So that was our goal at that time. We submitted it, and it was soundly rejected. I believe there was a 13-page letter telling us why it didn't work.
HCD has said they won't just sign off on just ADUs. They will allow you some ADUs based upon historical averages of approval within that jurisdiction, but it's usually a very small part of your overall number.
Okay, and in our housing element update, we've proposed about 80?
Just under 100, yes.
Just under 100, okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next up is Bridges at Kramer?
Thank you. So we met Wednesday, September 28th. It was a busy day that day. Bridges at Kramer Place, just in case for some, I'll do briefly. But back in, I want to say, and Pat might be able to help me with the dates better. I want to say it was 2016 or so, the county board of supervisors put together an advisory group because they were funding a shelter that was going to help bridge the gap between homelessness and vacancy. And so, part of that, since every, so there's 34 cities, and they broke them into spas or service provider areas. And we are part of the North Spa, which is like 13 different cities. Quickly, it's Placentia, Anaheim, Cypress, La Palma, Brea, Fullerton, Los Al, Stanton, Villa Park, Brina Park, La Habra, Orange, and Norbalinda. That's considered North Spa. So of those 13 cities, there's a representative from each one because each of the cities contribute financially into this pool of money that helps go to support this Bridges at Kramer, which is run by the nonprofit organization Mercy House. So, part of the bylaws, when that was established with the board of supervisors back in 15 or 16, was that each city gets a representative. Well, we're only meeting quarterly, and the reporting that we get goes from July 1 of one year to June 30th of the next year, which means that we're only getting a snapshot, two meetings out of each year because it goes into the next fiscal year. So it was brought up at the last meeting, a couple of things. One, do we even need to meet? Which that was put a kibosh because it is, it is an important meeting since the cities do contribute money, that they do need to have a representative so that the residents know where their taxpayer dollars are going and what for. And then two, should it be meeting more frequently than just quarterly? Because we do get updates on exits and how many placements and known exits, and I can go over all that. But, so we had an extensive, lengthy discussion about that, at which point the clerk of the board does have to go through and look at the bylaws. And I believe we are advocating for perhaps meeting more frequently so we can get better snapshots on what's going on and have a better idea and handle on the dollars that are actually going in. So that's kind of, I can report on numbers. They're not much different than the last time as far as known exits and whatnot, and they're still not at capacity because of COVID. But that was the gist of this meeting last time, and we'll meet again in three months, and I'll be able to tell you what the decision was as far as the frequency of the meeting. That was it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Then we'll move on to Senior Citizens Advisory Committee?
Okay. Yes, me too. Hold on, I got to transition. Did I tell you I work also? I got a real job? Okay. So, there are two meetings with the Senior Citizens Advisory Council. One is the general meeting, and the other one is a subset of that, which is the Wellbeing Reimagined. So the first one, October 14th, was the general meeting. And that one actually discussed about a home share program. And I guess this is a very popular concept in Europe. And what that home share program is, is you take an elder or senior that might have a large home, or, you know, even a home that just has a room for rent, and you pair them with somebody that would be potentially at risk for being homeless. Perhaps, say, the student that is trying to make ends meet and go to school and work, and is working out of their, or living out of their car. So, we were introduced to this home share program that if anyone is interested, I can get more information on. But it's pairing some students with some of the older seniors, and that way, it also is mutually beneficial, right? So this younger person can help do things, like take out the trash, or monitor, you know, visitors that come to the door, since our seniors are quite susceptible to that. And then, the senior, they do get paid through this home share program. So that was the first one. The second one on Wellbeing Reimagined was actually really interesting, and I did not know this. And you don't have to be a senior to participate in this program, but Saddleback College Emeritus Program, and it says for seniors, but it's not necessarily just for seniors. You can be our age and do it too. You can even be 17. So what it is, is it's classes that you can either go in person or online, or in person and online, and they don't cost anything. You sign up and you apply. And it's 200 section, 72 are in person, 113 classes are online synchronous live. And then there's about 17 classes that are videoed, and then you just watch the class and get your information that way. But it's for classes in the arts, photography, ceramics, music, stained glass, quilting, crocheting, anything that you could want to take a class in. And it's, I think, fantastic because again, it goes back to our seniors in the digital divide, where some of them are isolated or not able to integrate back in, or they don't want to leave their home for whatever reason. And this is such a fabulous program, and they get to take a class, or even if it's a senior that didn't get to finish and go back to school. So, it's through Saddleback College. If anybody, we can put the link up on our feeder, but it's the Emeritus Program through Saddleback College, and it's like lifelong learning. So it's, I want to take a class. Anyway, so that was it.
Very cool. So, it's not listed on here, but I'm going to file this one under Investment Advisory Committee, sort of. We'd had a lot of talk. We've mentioned amongst the council discussions about inflation. It's a very large topic. It's something that impacts all of us. So I had actually reached out to Bill Underwood and Lynn Doty, by extension, so our Investment Advisory Committee, to invite them to come and give a little talk about what does inflation mean for a city our size? What does it mean for the citizens of Villa Park? What are things that we could do about inflation? Are there things that individuals can have an impact on? What about many of the people in Villa Park who are business owners? What's a good way to tackle the implications of inflation and financial situations? So, in the midst of this discussion, instead of just coming and giving a quick talk on it, we decided it would be really cool if we could have like a town hall. If we could have them come, give a little discussion about it, and then invite residents to ask questions and participate. So, November 17th, in just a few weeks, at 6:00 p.m. here in City Hall, we will host a town hall discussion with our illustrious, I mean, having Bill Underwood, Lynn Doty, the expertise, the years of teaching and knowledge that they bring to come and talk to all of us in the city about something like this is really valuable. So mark it on your calendars. I'll say it again, November 17th at 6:00 p.m. Okay.
I served on the Investment Advisory Committee, and they are a fantastic group of individuals. The knowledge-based experience is by far, I mean, fantastic.
We're very lucky.
Very lucky.
So, we're now at Public Comments section. This time, we review comments from members of the public to address any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. We also will be reviewing public comments on each agenda item. Steve, is there anyone present or that wrote in from the public who'd like to comment in public?
We have no written comments, but we do have two people submitted blue sheets.
Okay. For general public comment or on an individual item?
There's also some for a specific item, but for just two for general.
Okay. Please invite them up.
First one is Matt Kern.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Matt Kern. I'm a district representative for State Senator Dave Minn, and I'm here to read a statement on his behalf. Earlier this month, I toured two transitional kindergarten classes in the Orange Unified School District, which I have the privilege of representing. These classroom visits were organized by OUSD in conjunction with the California School Board Association, a nonprofit advocacy organization that represents school board members. I was accompanied by representatives from CSBA, OUSD boards of trustees, and school officials. As a member of the State Senate Budget Subcommittee on Education and a parent of three schoolchildren, I have taken a strong interest in our state's public education system, including how our local schools are adapting to the state's move towards expanded TK. It was a deeply informative tour for me, and I was able to speak with principals, teachers, and students about their experiences in the new TK classes. I came away incredibly impressed, not only with the two classes I visited, but with the deep care and commitment of OUSD's trustees, administrators, and teachers. So, it was disheartening to me to have recently learned that my informational tour had come under the criticism from several parents because one of the officials that participated in this tour is openly gay and in their personal time is also politically active for LGBTQ causes. I want to be clear about two things. First, at no time during this tour were any political matters of any kind discussed. Second, the homophobia expressed by these parents and the implication that members of our LGBTQ community should be barred from employment in positions that provide access to our schools is disgraceful and has no place in our community. My wife and I work hard to teach our kids the values of inclusion, compassion, and respect for others. We are proud to live in a community that celebrates our diversity. These are American values, they are California values, and they are Orange County values. It is incredibly sad that a small number of people who spew hateful rhetoric have distracted us from what should have been the real focus parents have, the incredible successes of OUSD in providing caring, high-quality instruction in its elementary schools. OUSD parents should be proud of their schools and the excellent education they provide. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Such an important message. Unfortunately, OUSD and city business are completely separate, but I certainly hope that the message is communicated to the board as well. Thank you for coming.
Next up?
Donna Buckston?
Donna?
Good evening, Mayor Zimmerman, City Council members, and city staff. I'm Donna Buckston, in case you forgot. I thank you for the opportunity to provide my monthly resident update about school traffic along Serrano Avenue. Last time I addressed you, the school year had just started, and we were very pleased that we had gotten off to a great start. We were observing that students had adapted to the elimination of one of the crosswalks, and that reduces the number of times that cars are stopped. You recently voted to approve parking restrictions on Nichols and Serrano, a change that was overwhelmingly supported by the residents. Because of the removal of the high school student parking in this area, we now enjoy loading and unloading zones. loading and unloading zones for morning and afternoons, better traffic flow due to improved visibility. And in a very surprising development, the school resource officer reported a reduction in contraband identification at the high school. And this reduction has been attributed to the fact that dozens of students were moved off our residential streets, and now are parking where they belong in the high school parking lot. So that was a surprising outcome from that. The residents in this area have provided very positive feedback about this change to Steve Franks and are very happy to have had your support. So thank you for that. In the last month, we addressed another choke point, and that is the issue of left turns in front of Serravilla Middle School on the east parking lot. Before we addressed this change, we observed an average of 85 cars in that lot in the mornings. It's not open in the afternoon. Waiting for left turns was causing 15 to 18 backups in that area every morning. And through the school email system, as well as Villa Park's feeder, we were able to educate the parents about the new loading and unloading zones, including the maps, you've probably seen them. And we successfully dropped the number of cars going through that lot to an average of 45. And here comes some stats for you, Councilwoman Miles, 47% reduction on that. And then the backups to traffic have dropped from an average of about 15 per day to five, which is a 66% reduction. So needless to say, we're very pleased that we were able to have that kind of success with simple education and communication to the families. That is my report for you this evening, but I don't want to close without letting you know how much I appreciate your service to the city. I also appreciate the opportunity to be able to work with the city on this project, and have been very pleased that we've been able to achieve the successes that we have so far. Do any of you have any questions for me?
No question, just thank you for the data, because you know I love.
I know you love the data.
Very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Sure.
Along those same lines, as my friend of the data here, my colleague, thank you for providing that. Thank you for making the community safer. Thank you for making the educational experience of the students better. Thank you for volunteering in our community and being such an integral part of making this really an amazing committee. So thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. I will say, the job is a little bit like herding cats. You shoo them out of one place, and then they're over here. In fact, we're working on a new issue, and we have already identified some solutions, and we're working on it. And so it's an ongoing process, because we constantly have new parents coming into the process that require education. And I'm looking for some longer-term solutions, working with the school district, that hopefully we can achieve more success in reducing the number of cars on the road. That's really the answer, so.
Yeah, I think that's hitting on a really important point. The school district really supports your efforts.
Yes.
The sheriff's department supports your efforts, and the community supports your efforts. And in the end, it's making the students that much safer because of the lack of contraband in schools, the fact that the students are being forced to park inappropriate parking spaces on campus where the vehicles are subject to search, where they are subject to registration and licensing, and all the things that a driver should be subject to in the state of California.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. And I just want to just last say that, you know, Steve has been a big part of the relationship with OUSD, and that is a really key part of the successes that we're having. We have a great relationship, probably the best we've had in as long as I've been involved with this. So thank you again, I appreciate it very much.
Just for record, we have Principal Morrison at the Serravillas is an excellent, she's been very supportive, and Scott Harvey from the district has been an incredible resource to help us. So the district has been hand-in-hand, step-in-step with us on each of these things. So we do need to, for the record, make sure that they get the accolades in the progress we've made, because without them, it doesn't happen. The new principal, I should mention at Villa Park High School, but I don't know his name off the top of my head.
McHouston. McHouston. I was gonna mention him as well, because he's also been really integral in getting...
He's made some changes in policy with regards to kids leaving campuses, which have changed the reality that we're dealing with. So without the cooperation, we wouldn't have made the progress. So I do want to just name those individuals specifically, because they've been very instrumental in what we've been able to accomplish, and without them, like Donna said, we wouldn't be as far as we are.
Thanks, Steve. I think it's important to recognize those individuals who really have, from the schools, that relationship is really important, so thank you. Okay, did we have any other?
Yes, Jordan Wu.
Jordan?
Thank you, Mayor Zimmerman and City Council. My name is Jordan Wu. I am here to want to inform the city and also all the Indian-American citizens in our community, Happy Diwali. And I want to personally thank Jay Katani's family, who helped our foundation to decorate the city hall with Diwali and spray the celebration to our city. I know we have received a lot of positive notes from the residents who had no clue what Diwali is. So I think Jay Katani and family should be thanked and be credited for. Secondly, I'm also here to, if I could, talk about Halloween Fest. My wife, Shaming, and myself are co-chair, taking over from Nicole Jones years ago, starting this Halloween Fest. I just want to here to say, we need more vendors. So anybody watching, and also anybody in this audience, if you have small business, you would like to be participating, the vendors, please contact me. We have a lot of space. And also bring your kids, bring your grandkids to come out this Saturday, four o'clock to seven o'clock, and participate. And also, most importantly, join the contest for kids, for your pets, or as a family. Thank you so much, and look forward to see everybody this Saturday.
Jordan, it looks great out there. I was just gonna, I've heard from a lot of people too, that, you know, the number of new events that we've brought in to really celebrate the diversity in our community has been fantastic. And the Community Services Foundation, yourself, everybody on there has done a really great job of doing that. And I hope we just continue to do that and provide more events. It's been really good for the city.
Thank you. That's definitely my goal.
Can you confirm the time that people need to sign up for the costume contest?
Ooh. That is not my specialty, that's my wife's specialty, so I don't want to say something that's wrong. I want to say in the past, the deadline is about 4:30 or 4:45.
It's early, yeah.
Yeah, because we want to start, we want to get the show going by five o'clock.
Okay.
So we definitely want to have a deadline. I do apologize, I know in the past, there are some family and kids got hurt because they were not able to sign up. So that's why I'm using this public forum to inform everybody, please sign up as early as possible.
And, you know, we're all there, and so I think we can help, you know, early on, tell people, make sure you sign up for the costume contest.
Fantastic, greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No others? That's it?
No.
Okay. We'll now move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is to review and waive the reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I'll now open the hearing. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is the monthly item to help move our city council meetings in an efficient and effective manner. We'd recommend approval.
Okay. Is there anybody to speak on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Council members, is there any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Close the hearing, and we have a motion and a second already. If we could vote?
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it. And then our next hearing is to approve the first reading of ordinance 2022-628. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. Effective January 1st, the 2022 California Building Standards Codes go into effect. They basically affect our administrative code, our building code, our residential, et cetera. There's a number in plumbing, energy, et cetera. These codes are applicable to all cities in California. However, if we want to, we can amend them specifically to our city. Ordinance number 2022-628 adopts the California Building Standards Codes and makes certain amendments based on various climatic geological and topographical conditions as referenced in the ordinance. They are administrative provisions of all of the codes and subsequent provisions of the fire code. The proposed amendments to fire code are based upon recommendation by OCFA. They provide us information, we just adopt them. This is something that we encounter every two years. So the action recommended today is that you approve the first reading of ordinance 2022-628, and set a public hearing for the city council meeting on November 15th, 2022, for the second reading.
Okay. Council members, are there any, or do we have anybody from the public that's come in, written in on this?
No, sir.
Council members, are there, is there any discussion on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can we vote?
Passes 5-0, so on November 15th, we'll have the second reading.
Second reading, fantastic. I believe the second one, or the next item, the variance 2022-07, was continued December?
Yeah, so we...
I'll have to recuse myself.
We're good, though.
Couple of things we have to do here, just administratively. One, we have to have anyone come here to speak, we have to allow them the opportunity to speak, because it was noticed and continued from last meeting. Councilwoman Miles is accusing herself. And thirdly, the applicant has asked that this item be continued until December 13th meeting, regular meeting, because of some conflicts that he has, both tonight and the November 15th meeting. So with that, unless Todd has anything different, I think you have to take a vote to continue it.
Okay, so is there anybody?
Yeah, because it was a notice meeting, we have to officially continue it, or else we have to notice it all again. And for the record, Crystal recues herself, because her property is within the distance for recusal requirements.
Right.
From this project.
Understood. So do we have anybody from the public who came to comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Council members, any other discussion, any objections to the continuance?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we'll, motion to continue.
Continue till December 13th.
Motion to continue. Continue to December 13th.
Approve the continuance.
Heard some guy in the internet.
Is that better?
Yay!
Motion to approve the continuance.
There you go.
Is that legally a little bit better for you?
There you go. You nailed it.
Go ahead and vote.
That passes 4-0 with Councilwoman Miles recusing.
Crystal!
Come back.
Gotcha. Next item up is the consent calendar. We consider our consent calendar, all items are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council staff or the public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Are there any items for four or five that anyone would like to remove from the consent calendar?
No.
Seeing none. Then is there a motion to approve the balance?
So moved to approve.
We have a motion and a second. We could vote.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Steve. Moving on to new business. Our first item of new business is regarding staffing adjustments. Staff, could you please give the staff report?
Thank you. As you know, the city of Villa Park has operated on a very small staffing model that consists of a very small number of actual city staff with a large number of contracts with OC Fire Authority, contracts for law enforcement, contracts for planning, contracts for engineering, contracts for legal services or advisory services. So what we do is basically, we have 10 staff position. Three of those are technically intern positions, which are 20-hour, part-time intern positions. When I came to the council, came to the city almost six years ago, that was one of my challenges. We had interns. Since I came here in 2017, we have had 10 different interns filling those spots, which is obviously a continuity issue, and it's an issue for cross-training and making sure office coverage is there. We have essentially three office staff that cover the front, and if you have interns, they fill in the gap. So we all are learning each other's and making sure we have cross-coverage, et cetera. One of the things that's occurred to me, and the council has encouraged me in the past, I believe my last performance evaluation was to develop a succession plan. So one of the things I kind of went through, and I thought to myself, okay, we need to address this succession issue, and from my perspective, stability and continuity in city operations is a key to succession planning. So is there a good time to add? I'm a very conservative person, and I've been careful of our funding, and there's, you know, it always occurs to me, like, am I doing this? Would I do this with my own funds? There's no time, no good time for a bad idea, but there's never a bad time for good ideas. So from my perspective, this is a good idea, and providing continuity and stability to city services is key. While I love the city, I'm not going to stay here forever, and the next person's going to come in with that same set of challenges that I had. So we've had 10 interns, four finance directors, and continuity and stability have been sort of the call. So when I get a phone call, when an intern gets a phone call, sometimes they'll answer it, and we all kind of like, when I first started here, like, okay, what are they saying? How are they saying it? What are, you know, and it involves a lot of attention and activity for us. So I looked at this and said, okay, it would make more sense if we had the ability, or the other thing too, is our interns are brought in at a very low pay with no benefits for 20 hours. So most of them are grad students or somebody building their resume for future career opportunities. And that's great, but it doesn't build for, it's a job for them, it's not a career. So they're not, you know, we're training them, but there's not, it doesn't really make sense for a long-term investment in our training. We get fortunate, right to my right is one of our success stories, we had an intern she brought in, and she came from Cal State Fullerton. But we, last time we had a request for interns, we got nobody responding from Cal State Fullerton, basically because we were in a post-COVID era, and people, you know, didn't want to do that. So it's difficult to get them there. So one of the things I've said is, well, what are the roles that these interns, the three interns cover? One of them covers planning. Right now, that person is a graduate student in the planning program, Justin, you know him, Justin Urbanski, and he does a terrific job, it's within his major, and he's working, and he complements what Ray, Ray Pascal, our planning manager, does for us. So it's, we're very fortunate that that meshes really uniquely. So that one, I don't want to mess with that. That's a unique opportunity that helps Ray do some things like easements and things like that, that otherwise would require Ray expensive time, that we would have a contractor otherwise. The other two basically provide general office administrative support and assistance with our financial documentation and, you know, balance checkbooks. One of the keys is, when you have a small office, and one of the things that you'll find is, we've gotten clean audits. And what's important is, because we have separation of powers. So not one person, I can't, basically, I can't, I can sign a check, but I can't request a check be written. I can't provide, you know, the invoices have to be approved by somebody else, the request. So we have to have a break, and so it's not one person saying, initiating a work order, getting, picking a vendor, getting an invoice, paying the vendor, and doing all those. So we have to separate those powers, and that's important to my role. So what we need to do, and one we've been very successful, is separating those. Well, we have a CPA working in our finance department, who is excellent, but we've had four finance directors in the last six years. And what their role is, is to do work that I believe is, you know, CPA is a pretty high advanced degree, and these are pretty sharp. I don't want them to balance our checkbook necessarily, I want them to monitor that we're doing it correctly, following our procedures, et cetera. So I need staff to do that. So training an intern who's basically going to be gone in anywhere from six to nine months is sort of problematic to me. They can do it, but they can't do some of the more sophisticated things, like prepare general vouchers and things like that. So one of the things I want them to be able to do is that. That's what some of our interns do, are starting to do now. The other thing is, they provide administrative office support, they do passport processing, they answer telephone calls, they do conference scheduling, et cetera. So basically, I want a management assistant that's going to do half that and half the help us on the financial type of thing. So basically doing what our interns are doing. So in essence, I'm not getting any more hours out of the deal, but I'm getting is a more permanent situation where someone's vested in the job, and somebody has a career with it. So we're getting an 80-hour, I mean, a 40-hour position, and I'm getting rid of two part-time interns. So I'm getting rid of the same number of hours. So actual position count technically goes down, but doesn't really count. So what does that cost us? It costs us another $32,000 annually, and I'm, for this year, it'd be $16,000. That's if you hire at the top ceiling. So every, if you know government positions, we hire, we get arranged, so allows me to effectively recruit and find basically what I want, and recruit at the right level of position, and pay them at a level that's competitive, so I can... So we've surveyed around various cities, I contacted five or six other cities, and they're all paying more. They're paying more than, like, they're all over $60,000. That's too high for us, we can't afford that. So I want to come in at something less than that. So I think that's sort of the goal I want to do, but I want to have somebody that's vested, that have a career path in, that when we train them, it's a significant effort[1795.01] it's a significant effort of our training, and it's a return on investment because they're going to turn around and do it for a couple of years. They're not going to do it for nine months and be gone, or six months and be gone, or whatever the case may be. Keep in mind, I don't have an opportunity, if an intern comes in here, right now, there's no opportunity to, we only have two other places they can go, and those are employees as analysts. So I have no other, I can't say, well, you work your way up a career ladder. There's no career ladder here. So I need to get them in here, and I need to get them vested in what they're doing. The other thing is, we rely on interns to provide office coverage. There are times I'll be at a meeting, there's earned vacation time or whatever. So we have an intern basically closing the office or opening the office, and the only one here. And that's a part-time person doing that. Now, why, it's okay? It's not okay. It's not something I like and feel totally comfortable with. I always wince, and I'm calling in all the time, and Alyssa can attest. When I'm not here, I'll call the office and say, hey, what's going on? Is everything called? Or, and we do have situations where sometimes interns or somebody will come to the counter who's agitated or, and/or an issue that has to be dealt with at a higher level than a part-time intern. So with that in mind, I'm proposing that we delete two of the interns, the two interns, create a permanent position, 40 hours, and we allow that person to have benefits. And that would be, person would be cross-trained, that person would be able to do multiple projects, and that person would be able to basically do the work the interns are doing now, except delve into it at a higher level. The second thing I'm asking for in the agenda item is to, we have a, like I say, a CPA that's doing it. We are a competitive salary there. I have no doubts there. But we have it technically qualified as a 30-hour position. So for purposes of retirement in the benefit package, they are, they receive basically a 30-hour credit toward retirement. That's a disincentive for somebody coming and staying here because they can go be a CPA at a, you know, lesser responsibility because they're not finance director, at OCTA or any, any other jurisdiction, and be getting the same pay, but be credited for 40 hours for eventual retirement down the road. Now, we're already paying that position, I believe, a comparable salary. So I want to keep that salary constant. So I'm not doing it. But the last four, well, three plus the current one, have spent 40-plus hours as the, 40-plus hours doing the work that's required. So we are basically, in my mind, recognizing that this person's working full-time. We can pretend it's a 30-hour, but it's a 40-hour. So in my mind, that person ought to be credited for it, and where we're going to be able to keep these people here and is by making sure that they competitively have the benefits that they do. So how will that be affecting us financially? Upfront? Nothing. Because our health benefits are based on gross salary, which won't change. Our worker's comp is based on a flat rate per employee. That won't change. Salary won't change. I'm not recommending. What it will do is add the incremental difference to our unfunded actual area liability. So that 10 hours, that 10 hours becomes something that eventually they accrue down, the actuary will say, okay, when that person retires, you're responsible for an additional 10 hours. So that would be something that would add on to it. Now, what does that mean? Is that means in our future, the incremental difference would be added to our, our retirement contribution. And that contribution in total for our whole city is $160,000 a year. So it's a much, it's a small percentage of one person. I don't, we haven't calced it out yet because it's dependent upon an actuarial calculation. So for purpose of our, of our retirement contribution, I have been reporting erroneously that we are 85% funded, our unfunded liability. Based on actuarial calculation because of the PARs money, we're actually at 90% funded. So we are much higher funded based on the actions. It is considered from 80 to 85%, you're considered well-funded in a retirement system. So we are well above that. And in fact, I think you'll hear even our investment advisory saying, you do not want to be over 90% because if you are, you, you're, you're subject to variations and fluctuation of market investments. So we are well-funded. I think that is a, from my perspective, it is a, one, recognition of the facts of reality. This person is actually a full-time employee, whether one admitted or not. And number two, it's a, we need to stabilize and provide to ensure that person is getting compensated with a benefit package that will keep them here, working for the city of Villa Park. Now, what do the residents get out of here? Well, they get a phone call. Somebody knows what they're doing when they call here. They walk in, they get somebody who knows what they're doing. I think that's an investment that they, that the residents not only would expect, they would demand. I think they don't want somebody that can't do it. I frequently I'll get them answering, and an intern will say, I don't want to talk to an intern. I want to talk to the city manager, or somebody who knows what they're doing. And I mean, unfortunately, as an intern, that's the reality. You're going to get that kind of phone call. But I don't think that's doing a service to the residents of Villa Park. They need to have the respect that they should. So I think from my perspective, this is my professional recommendation that if we are going to have a, we are going to have a stable city staff with continuity, we need to have cross-trained staff, staff that are permanent in nature, and not are going to come in and say, hey, I'm gone tomorrow because I got a new job somewhere else. That's 40 hours or something, and I can't compete with that. So I think that you need to keep in mind, the city of LA has administrative functions. And whether you like to hear this or not, the city of Villa Park has the exact same administrative responsibilities, much smaller level, but we have to do all the, all the reports. We have to do all the housing elements. We have to do all the, the audits, the CAFR of the Year End, you know, the budget preparation, the, all that stuff has to be done, the treasurer's reports, all those, all those things that we have, that every other city does, we have to do. So from my perspective, I think we have to keep that in mind. And if we want to be treated and respected as a city, we need to make sure we have the staff and the ability to provide those services to our residents, to the public, to the contractors walking in the front door, and anyone else who does business, businesses do the service. So it is a $32,000. The cost of that, we have $120,000 budget as a contingency every year. Several years ago, I proposed eliminating it, but the council said, no, keep it in the budget. I don't spend $120,000. It's always something I know I'm not going to spend. I mean, at most, I spend $20,000 when something happens, like, you know, an air conditioner, or if something happens, breakdowns, or we have a plug breakdown or whatever. So I'm perfectly willing to wipe that fund down, $32,000, although $16,000 for this year, but I'm perfectly willing to adjust that accordingly. I've, I was willing to do that several years ago, but I think if there's an offset that council would like to see directly, I'm willing to come up with it. I just think if, if you want this staff to be something, and the city to be something state-of-the-art, and edging, you know, providing what we should be to the residents who have that expectation, I think we need to take these actions. So that's, that's my spiel. I'm happy to, and I respect all those. You know, I'm not one to spend money without having alternate sources or something. So I'm very conservative about it. If it were my own checkbook, I'd be signing up right now. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Steve.
You can take a breath now.
Yeah.
Steve, is there anybody that wrote in from the public or wants to speak on this?
Mary Beth Felsen.
Mary Beth?
Good evening, council members. My name is Mary Beth Felsen. Steve Franks has just given an inspired explanation of the need to...
Can you speak into the microphone a little more?
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Of the need to increase permanent staff. I read the proposal that was part of the packet that we received for the city council meeting, and I had to say I had some concerns over the need and timing for increasing permanent staff, especially considering the state of the economy. We're facing high inflation, and most economists are predicting a recession. My concern was particularly in not involving the finance side of things. It was the increasing permanent staff. What planned expenditures will have to be cut or delayed as a result of the $32,000 additional staff person. And I think you've answered that today. It would come out of your contingency. With my understanding, then, that your contingency would drop $32,000 to continue this. So that was my concern. Where is it coming from? As you, you could probably imagine, I'm concerned about our, the management of our pavement and other issues, and I don't want any impact on that. I am very much looking forward to seeing the 2022-23 amended budget, which I understand is going to be in December. I want to see what's going to happen as a result of inflation. So that was my only comment. Thank you very much.
If it's okay, I kind of want to talk a little bit about inflation because one of the things the council has done over the years, and I've recommended it, we have fixed term contracts over a number of years with fixed rate increases, guaranteed 3% or 2% or whatever. The sheriff being the one anomaly, they come in every year. Even in good times, with all due respect, the sheriff comes in with inordinately high increases. So that's not affected, inflation doesn't affect the sheriff. It's, it's their list of what they're going to do in the following year. And I think Mayor Pro Tem Rossini had a discussion about the types of things that they will come up with to spend on a really, on a regular basis, to provide public safety all in good course. However, one of the things we do is, we have, we're not a consumable-based entity. In other words, we don't go to the grocery store. So the crisis you see in the grocery store, and you're paying, it's outlandish. I pay those same bills. But I don't, we don't buy food. We don't do those kinds of things typically. So those are very minimal, minimal, minimal expenses. Gasoline is our, probably our biggest thing. I think our gasoline bill, if I'm not mistaken, is about $250 to $300 a month. All right? So a 10% increase in that is outlandish, but it's not going to break the bank. Okay? So I want to keep in mind, so for our major expenses, the guy next to me.
Wow.
The, the, the planning, the things like that, the council's been wise enough to help and approve contracts that we've negotiated that have stepped increases over years that address themselves. So as a business, many of you are in business and can tell you for a fact, you trade off long-term contracts with known end things. So you kind of gamble, is inflation going to catch you now or later down the road? So sometimes inflation may be low, but you're going to get a 3% increase anyway. So that's what we've done with stepped increases on our majority of our contracts. The sheriff, I wish we had a step increase lock-in, and that's always a negotiation every year, and that's always a discussion item. But I don't think that there's a, you know, one of the things candidly leveraged for them is I don't have any more money. That's always a good, I mean, that's probably my best argument with the sheriff. If I don't have any more money to give you, and they'll look back and say, well, we don't have any more services to give you. And we go, we go back and forth, and we play a little game. But I do want to just talk a little bit about inflation. So inflation, while it can and will, because at the end of these short-term contracts, I guarantee somebody's going to come back at us and try and make up that deal. But one can always, you know, if you follow the progressions of the recession, you're hearing maybe at most it goes out to 2024, maybe it goes earlier. I, there's nobody that really knows for sure when the inflation's going to, the recession will or will not hit or not. But I think what we have in place is a service model that mitigates the impact of inflation to the best of our ability. We are also dealing with that with respect to our investment practices. So we are spending time tomorrow morning with our investment advisory, talking about how we're investing to address the changes in interest rates and things like that, so that the cash in hand, which by the way, we have, I want to say, a large amount of money in, because we have expenditures ready to go. So we have a lot of money invested right now that we can, you know, some, you know, 50% liquid, liquid, et cetera. So we have that as well. So we're trying to address the potential impact and adjustment of interest rates on both our revenue side and our expense side. So yeah, say, the CPI, if it stays at this rate, yeah, it's going to catch up with us in X number of years when our contracts expire. Yeah, they're going to come after us with some. There's no question. But I mean, and you know, at that point, we're going to have to deal with that issue regardless. And I think that's sort of, I want to, I want to kind of make that clear. We are not a regular, we're not like a household. I had to go to the grocery store, and I tell my wife, I said, oh my God, our grocery bill's like twice what it was last year. So that kind of thing is very different.
I think this is one of the things we talked about for the, that inflation meeting, to have somebody that comes in, and we can talk about what the city's doing and how that impacts.
So one of the things, I want to make it kind of clear is, we are, we are not as, you know, now, I mean, I'm more concerned candidly about housing prices. So that's something that does. But we tend to have, as you know, we always recognize our budget, our revenues, much lower than we anticipate, and we over-anticipate, or over, our expenditures. So we guess high on expenditures and guess low on revenues. Always then, I look good. Because then I look like, hey, guess what? We're under budget. That's our goal, and I think that's what we're doing. So we have under budget, like, for instance, on our AV growth, we're budgeting 2% or 3%. And maybe, I think it's 3% this year, but we're going to see 4% or 5%. So we may see almost double what, you know, we, we are going to anticipate. So those kinds of things. So I just want to kind of address that because I think inflation is a concern for our households, and are we, and we should rightfully be concerned about that. But that's on a more personal level than the city, because I think the city has done some things that help us insulate or mitigate that to the best degree.
For both the inflation meeting and in your meeting tomorrow, my concern is about the cost of asphalt, which is tied to the cost of fuel. For every dollar fuel goes up, 70% of cost of asphalt goes up, and we're going to use a lot of asphalt.
So for the, we, we budgeted more than our project we anticipated actually costing.
Well, that's excellent to hear.
So what, I mean, if, if asphalt goes through the ceiling, we're not going to be able to anticipate that. And I don't, candidly, $32,000 is not going to, you know, solve that problem regardless. So I'm going to be very candid. When you have a $2 million project, if $32,000 affects the volume of the project, you're off-base anyway. Because that's, we're not, we, we budgeted more than we, we budgeted the project that costs more than we anticipate it will. Now, the bids may come in and look, look at us differently. So we'll evaluate that. But one of the things is, we've got a little bit of time. We're not, you know, we are not starting the project till May. So we have a time and see where that lanes out for us. At some point, this is going to even out. And where it evens out, we'll see what happens. But I think one of the things we've tried to do, now, I mean, if asphalt tripled in cost, that's going to affect us no matter what we did, and we're going to have to reevaluate the scope of what we can accomplish. So that's going to be the reality. And again, I'm saying, if $32,000 is not going to make, at the cost per square foot of asphalt, it's probably not going to get you much more work done than you probably would already have done. In fact, $32,000 probably won't even cover street striping after we're done. So the street striping contract is more than, than the asphalt itself. So I just, I just keep the perspective, and that's what I'm sort of trying to give everybody a little bit when I talk. I'm not trying to sell you a used car, and I'm not trying to do, I'm just trying to recognize, keep things in context, and that's what you pay me to do.
Thanks, Steve.
We'll have more discussion. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Council members, are there any questions, staff?
Comment.
Comment.
It's about time. I think this is a wonderful proposition. One, because I think will increase employee retention, keep people here much longer, and employees are always a valued asset for, for any organization. I don't care if it's public or private. And I think, two, is it will give entry-level employment to some folks and give them an opportunity to grow within the organization. And I applaud you for what you're doing here.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Excuse me. As a small business owner who faces daily challenges with hiring and a small staff that actually parallels the size, both, both with the budget and the size of staff here in the city, I can totally appreciate what, what our city manager is trying to do because that consistency and continuity in having staff, especially those that can cross, cross-train and, and know every aspect of the job, when, if, for instance, one of the, the regular staff happens to go on maternity leave, you know, I mean, wonderful blessings, but it then leaves, it leaves the office handicapped. And by having somebody that can do a little bit of this and a little bit of that, it gives that cushion. And I definitely think, you know, we asked Steve to put together a succession plan, and I think this is part of that succession plan. Plus, when you have the interns, although they've been great and we're very fortunate, we've had some extremely likable, well-qualified, and very reliable interns, it's still, they could leave in a moment's notice, right? Because that's what they are. They're interns. They don't get any benefits. But I think by supporting this, it also conveys to our city manager that, that we trust in his judgment, and he's the one that has to work with them, not us, not us directly every day, eight to five. And I support this and think that it's a great idea. And yeah, the $32,000 is not going to make or break us. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Councilman?
Well, I agree with Steve Franks. We don't buy groceries. But what we do buy is asphalt. The estimates that I've heard from asking around is that the price of paving has gone up 30% to 50% from what it was last year. That's significant. May go up more. We all see what the gas prices are. The gasoline is produced from the same barrel of crude that the asphalt is produced from. We can expect similar, you know, when we do, do go out to bed, we should be prepared that we're going to have to pay substantially more to take care of our, to maintain our streets. Similarly, the, you know, we do have a contract coming up with the sheriff department. Our inflation nationwide is running roughly 10%. And I can't imagine that the sheriff deputies, the sheriff deputy union is going to accept something less than keeping parity with inflation. So we could expect a 10% increase there. Now, that's important because the sheriff, our sheriff department budget or budget item is almost half of our total city budget. So that's a significant hit on our budget, or will be. I expect that our city manager is going to be coming back to us at some point in time, asking for salary increases to help keep our staff on parity with inflation 10%. I would be surprised if it's not, you know, maybe it's not going to be 10%, but it's going to be in the ballpark. So I've not seen a pro forma of what, financial statements of what these changes are going to be, how they these changes are going to be, how they're going to, to impact us financially. Um, uh, you know, again, we, we are dealing with a situation where we're in a period of rapid inflation, who knows where it's going to go. Uh, we, um, are also facing a stiff, uh, recession. You know, you look around, the Fed, uh, all the financial analysts, everybody's anticipating, bracing for a significant recession. Uh, if you want to get it down to personal budgets, yeah, if you've, uh, if you realize that you're dealing, as a family, if you're dealing with significant inflation and a potential for recession that may impact your income, uh, you don't, uh, take on new debt. You don't take on new, um, new costs that are going to be built in for a long period of time. You hold off until things even out and before you make significant investments. Personally, I think this is, uh, this is the wrong proposal at the wrong time. And I, one other thing I'd like to point out is that, you know, Pat Buttrick is the only one who's been around the city of Villa Park as long as I have. And, um, back in the mid-nineties, the Register did an article on our ci- then-city manager, uh, and he was talking about the staffing that we had just twenty-five years ago in this very same city hall. He was a half-time city manager. He was a retired businessman, and he was able to manage our affairs. And he had one other administrative staff. He had a receptionist slash city clerk slash, um, bookkeeper, and she was full-time, so we had one and a half staff people running the city for us, and things seemed to work pretty well. Now we've got, you know, much more staff already in our, uh, the front office of our city hall, and we're looking to add more. And we're looking to add additional, um, pension costs to our city. Uh, it just doesn't seem to be, to me, to be the right time to be, uh, asking our residents to take on these things, and if, if we've got a hundred and thirty, you know, a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars or whatever it was in discretionary funds, why don't we pave potter circle? Go take a look at that, it looks like a war zone. Um, we should be taking care of our residents, not making things easier for us in city hall. Those are my comments.
Sure.
Initially, I kind of took a look at this and had mixed emotions. Uh, I, I share my colleagues' concerns, uh, about the, the state of our finances. Our country is not doing better in the last few years, it's doing much, much worse. We already are in a recession based upon any independent analysis of the economy. Uh, you don't have to be an econ major to figure that one out. Uh, we have historic rampant inflation that is causing all of us to deal with catastrophic changes in some folks' lives, in inconvenience in other people's lives, but real, real issues on the home front. It's a punch in the mouth every time you go to the grocery store, every time you fill up your gas tank, every time you buy your kid, kids a, a pair of shoes, if you can find them. Uh, it's, it, it's significant, it's real. And we don't buy groceries here within the city, but we do, we do pay for some things, and I have some concerns about that. At the same time, you, you can't ignore the fiscal reality of, we're already paying for, uh, two interns, uh, three, in a sense, and I think there is a need to, um, make that position permanent. Um, I, I'm concerned about the timing of it, um, but I think, uh, I have to trust my city manager on this one, and, um, if things go sideways, I hold him accountable. He has not disappointed me yet, I don't think he's going to disappoint me in the future. With respect to, um, making the, uh, finance manager's position a forty-hour position versus thirty-hour position, um, how, is, is that twenty-five percent more, um, roughly speaking, of an unfunded liability? How's that work out? What's the math on that?
It's based on the percentage of her, um, salary, so it, retirement contribution is based on your salary. So it's a gross salary contribution, so like I said, it's our, it doesn't affect us now, but in the retirement contribution, in other words, they're going to say when she retires, or when the person retires, I, I shouldn't say she, but when the person from that retires, they're entitled to a retirement. So actuarially, they're going to live for X amount of years, and they base the number of service hours that you have in, in calculating your, your benefit that will be given to you during those time periods. So that's your unfunded li- that's your liability down the road. So in essence, um, that is, that ten hours will be an incremental difference, and twenty-five percent of that cost of that position will increase. However, it is based of, spread over probably a thirty-year time span of how long she'll, or actuarially, they live. I, I'm not an actuarial, but, you know, they, they have, you know, the average length of stay of how somebody lives, dies, or whatever. So that calculates out to a percentage increase of, for her. So again, uh, that then, when they figure that, it, ultimately, they'll come back and say, okay, your, your actuarial unfunded liability went up by X percent overall, so here it is. So like I said, we'd pay a hundred and sixty-five thousand a year now for a retirement contribution from the city, that may go up to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars a year, or something along those lines. I, you know, the, the actuarial's going to have to tell us what that plays out, and it's over the number of years. The other thing they take into mind is how much you are already funded. So we are close to like ninety percent funded. So they say, look, you're unfunded this amount, this is, so you've got to contribute to make up that gap. If you've already made up that gap, you don't get to pay again, you, you just pay the incremental difference. So the, the steps the city has taken have put us in a better-than-anticipated position. Now, it could go down if the, if Calper's investments go down or things like that, that happens. But I think what we need to keep in mind is, yes, there is an increase. You're right, you're correct.
Okay. I, I am concerned also that, um, you know, the, we've been very fortunate in this city in the time that I've lived here and the time that most residents candidly have lived here to see a significant growth in, um, property tax, which is our main vehicle, our, our main source of revenue, I should say, that keeps us going, and I, I don't think it takes a genius to figure out that, um, real estate's going to go down here in the very near future if it already hasn't. Um, are you pretty confident that we're, we're going to be good moving forward, uh, under the worst-case scenario?
Uh, I, I believe we are. I believe that, um, you know, they, they went back in two thousand and seven or eight, or when their last recession was, the, the, uh, property values, the assessed valuation didn't necessarily drop, we'd, we do a lot of improvements. So as you do improvements on properties, people buy and rebuild houses, it goes up. So they reappraise everything. So a lot of these homes that were like, like, um, Councilman Colacott's purchased years and years ago, were appraised a certain amount, for Prop thirteen, they only go up a certain per, two percent per year, right? Well, once you do construction on them, that two percent limit goes away, and they basically are allowed to appraise at whatever fair market is at that time, and then tax you on top of that. So for all those improvements that are being made in Villa Park, these are stateset rates, they're not in the city controls, but those change a lot. So we have consistently outperformed the county-wide average. So even in the worst-case scenarios, there's still been a positive, or close to a positive for us in a percentage growth in AV in Villa Park. So I think we're probably, and, you know, unless, unless we lose rates, you know, I don't know where it goes. I mean, the housing market in two thousand and seven, eight was as bad as anything I've ever seen, I, and we still made it through that without major decreases in, in our AV growth. So I think we, we, you know, going on history is the trends, I guess, trend analysis is the best I can offer.
I think, lastly, um, I guess my one point of contention is to make sure that if this person is approved, some time is given to, um, code enforcement, building and safety, not just, um, some of the other, um, duties, as you mentioned, because in the end, um, eventually, Mr. Tarrant's going to move on, um, and he's going to enjoy his retirement, a well-deserved and earned retirement. And candidly, I think there, without airing, um, either closed-session business or quote-unquote dirty laundry within the city, there have been some times here and there where either we could have caught things, or residents could have been more, more forthcoming with things, and I think giving him an extra set of eyes, giving him, or the residents an extra resource, or giving you that, that, um, extra set of eyes or, or resource might be beneficial, and I would, I would offer that my support is somewhat conditional on a significant portion of that, uh, assistance time, um, being put in that direction, um, with respect. Okay? Thank you.
Appreciate the point.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir, thank you.
Want to add something?
Uh, sure. No, no, go ahead.
Um, one of the things I don't know that we considered is, and I ha- I work for a large enterprise that has over, we employ over a thousand people, and one of the biggest concerns we have from an HR perspective is turnover in our organization, because with that turnover comes significant cost. There's cost of retraining, there's a cost of retooling, there's a cost for lost productivity in the employee, uh, and the employees. So I think when you look at thirty-two thousand dollars, I don't think we've, we've tallied up all the dollars that we spent in lost productivity and other wa- other things during the year because of the, the constant turnover of people and the training that they have to go through and so forth. So I think we need to keep those offset costs in our mind, that while it may be hidden, they exist. And it, and I'm telling you, in any organization, enterprise or small, small business or whatever, turnover is expensive. So you want employee retention, you want to maintain employees, so that you don't run into those costs later on down the road. Thank you.
Yeah, well, I should have spoke first then, because I was going to talk about, uh, what the actual cost of an empty seat is, or of when you have an employee that you don't hire, um, and it's very similar, so I, uh, not going to go into too much, but let's start off by saying, um, thank you very much for your explanation, Steve. You've always provided very clear, concise, like, ample descriptions of exactly why you want something and what it means to the city. I think that that cost of the, the turnover in an intern is significant, um, and I think that what you've done in establishing the positions that you have and the, in the way that you have, is you've created, uh, a really stable foundation for this city in city hall. I think that the staff appreciates that. I know we, as council members, we've given you glowing recommendations, because what you've done in staffing our city has been responsible and effective. This is a very fiscally conservative council. We've always tried to approve things within the means of the city. We've funded the, uh, reserve fund, so that we're able to look forward to the future to handle things. I will say that one of the reasons I brought up the inflation, as we've talked about this in many areas, I know there are many cities or, or many countries around the world where inflation is much worse as compared to the United States. The United States has done well, but we are looking at this recession, we are looking at these things. Locking in the ten percent inflation, asking for those, those raises or those things would be the worst thing, I think that's what, um, Bill Underwood and, and Lynn Doughty will tell us when we get to that inflation meeting, we definitely don't want to lock those things in. I think that's the message to all business owners out there, if you take the ten percent inflation and you give that back to your employees, you lock those rates in, it perpetuates that inflation and it grows, it makes it worse. So again, we'll get more into this, this will be a really cool town hall, we'll get into the, the depths of the economics behind that, but, um, it's an interest that I have, so, um, I'm excited to, to share that with everybody. I think that what you're doing is not that, I think that what you're proposing is fiscally responsible, it's a good way to maintain the level of service that our city, that our city rep- our city residents, our citizens have come to expect, um, and I think that what you've proposed is very reasonable. So I just wanted to say thank you, um, and I appreciate all your work. So having said that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
And I'll go ahead and second it. Can we vote? Steve, could you read the votes?
Passed by a four-one vote.
Thank you, sir. That's Bob Colacott, okay, got it. Excellent. City manager's report is next.
So item number seven is the monthly report. The only thing, everything's listed in there in interest of time, I won't go through it, I'm available to answer any questions. One of the things I would like to, uh, add is, of great interest, we are in discussions with HCD with regard to responding to their last set of, they're, they're basically, I think it was August, they sent us, think. So we believe with the consultant that they, that you authorize I work with, they have gotten to a point where we are in discussions, we believe, uh, we, we believe we've answered their questions. HCD is the question, the, the movement now is to make sure that they agree. So unlike in the past, we're not going to have you approve something and have them go turn it down again, we go through a whole three-month process and et cetera. So right now, we're sitting down and having multiple conversations, the consultants, myself included, Ray Pasquale, where, you know, to have that discussion, saying, okay, did we hit this target, did we hit that target? Uh, and, you know, one of the initial things was, well, on that issue, you're on the goal line. Okay, so I think we're making headway, and I'm very optimistic, so it would be my hope that before the end of this calendar year, we have something affirmatively that we can say before we ask the council to approve our fifth iteration of the housing element, that we have something that is acceptable to HCD. So we don't go into this, give it back, give it back, give it back, and we're playing a volley in tennis. So we're trying to get to a, a more efficient way to approve this without waiting another month to get council approval or HCD approval, et cetera. So I just want to share that with you, it is my hope within the next, uh, by the end of the calendar year, that we'll have something shared with them, uh, that, share with you that we can say, yes, this is, HCD will approve us on this. Keep in mind that HCD has still only approved thirty percent of the SCAG region cities. So that means seventy percent are, are not approved yet. We're in the one-seventy, you know, so if you go through the city of, I mean, the county of Orange, you can start seeing, yeah, there are some cities. Uh, there, it is deceptive a little bit, because like Yorba Linda is in a situation where they have to have a zoning amendment approved as a referendum, and if that doesn't pass, their housing element falls down. So they may have conditional HCD approval, but it's based on, so I mean, there's a lot of that nuances, and every city has a lot of different nuances and things going on. So, um, I, I can't speak for how some are approved and some are not, but I just wanted to give you an update, those, that dialogue is happening, based on the council's wishes and things, and we're responding. Nothing is changing in our element, but we are changing the wording and how we do things and how we explain things to them, because we're finding that's the issue. It's not that they're disagreeing with our approach, they're disagreeing with how we explained it maybe, and, and, you know, that's what we're coming to find out. So that's where we're working on, I just wanted to give you kind of a, a real brief, you know, thirty-second update.
Excellent. Are there any public comments on this? Do we have any questions of city staff, or, on the city manager's report, questions? Excellent, thank you for the report. That moves us along to, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Matters. It's now time to hear individual councilmember information items, starting with Councilmember Pitts. Okay. Mayor Bortem?
I'll wait till you have.
Okay. Colacott?
Nothing to report.
Number nine?
I always have something to say. Uh, just really looking forward to Halloween Fest, and make sure that if you're interested in doing the Marines to, um, uh, contact, um, go through Foundation to sign up to host a Marine by, hopefully by Friday. And I'm looking forward to the Foundation event this Saturday.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Did you want to talk now, or you want, you want me to go?
All right.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to, uh, I'm sorry Pat left, but, oh no, you're there. Okay.
I had to stand up.
Gotcha. Just wanted to say thank you for the, the, um, the forum we had for the new, um, candidates. Thank you, council members, they're not council members yet, so for the new candidate, the candidates' forum was fantastic, uh, really appreciated, I really, I mean, it was very well-attended, um, there were a lot of people in the room, and, um, I, I think I shared with a couple of people, I was surprised, sitting in the audience, how much I wanted to stand up and answer the questions. Uh, you know, maybe another time, but, uh, it was very well-run, and we learned a lot from each of the candidates, there was a lot of really good information, and, uh, did you want to say something? Sure? I saw you raise your hand.
Quickly, this is very quick, but I want to thank the city of Villa Park and the people who showed up, and how well they listened to what the instructions were, and how well they followed. So I give a round of applause to the city of Villa Park and all the residents who participated. That was really, really, it made my job very easy.
Excellent.
So thank you for letting me say that.
Um, and so that was, I just wanted, that was this last month, got to attend that, I know you were there also, but it was really great. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Pat, for all that you've done for us. Along the same lines of the candidates' forum, without getting political one direction or the other, because that'd be inappropriate in this position, I just want to reemphasize to all of our residents to please vote, please vote, I don't care if you disagree with me, let's have a discussion, whatever, that's fine, do your research. Vote with your head and not with your heart. I think the current economic situation we're in right now is
I think the current economic situation we're in right now is because people voted with their heart and not their head. You have to do your due diligence, you have to look into the background and what the motivations are, and what the special interests are that are behind candidates. Certainly at the national and the state level. Locally, thankfully, it's a lot more transparent, but please do your research. Don't rely upon this person or that person, or this party or that party. Please do your research, and please vote. Thank you.
I'll just echo it, because that's a great point. I mean, thank you, sir, that's, voting is an important, important part of our, of being a citizen. It is something that you look things up, you, every citizen is responsible for finding that information out and then putting that into a ballot. Yeah, we're all elected, obviously, by the citizens, and so it, it, but it, it just, it's really important for everybody to vote. I think that's, can't be overstated. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. For our next meeting is November 15th at 6:30 here at city hall. Thank you all for coming.